Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees Tuesday, July 19. I'd like to ask for a call to your order.
Mike Kehley.
Present.
Julie Spencer-Robinson. President. Richard DeQuadro.
Present.
Mayor Gene Luisiara is here. And we do not have an NPS interim at the table today.
I'd like to this time everybody stand for one more reason. Julie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under power, indivisible and one nation in its essence.
At this time, I'd like to read our mission statement. Smith Vocational Horticultural High School is to prepare students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs. Is there any participation by the public tonight? Please come forward. I'd like to have Kim Keel address the trustees.
Thank you. Yes, and Tracy Burke, my colleague, sends her apologies. The poor dear had to go on vacation in Greece, so she's not here. But on behalf of her and myself, we want to say thank you to the Board of Trustees who have continually supported us through these four years of the Viking Moonstone. And I can't believe that this academic year will mark the fifth year so quickly. The addition of the art curriculum and the creative writing extracurricular club joins the humanities with our curriculum overall. And it helps our students prepare for college, for their civil responsibilities, and their creative thinking. And Tracy and I have just been so pleased to be able to foster that with staff and students. You, of course, are our governing body, but you're also staff, and so we're extending an invitation to you all for this milestone of five years to please, if you would like, submit your visual art or creative writing to the Moonstone for Volume Five. And again, we thank you so much. I'm a little embarrassed. I do not, we had a little snafu at the end of the year with making these copies, so I have free copies, but I will make sure that Dr. Lincoln Hooker, you already have a copy, that everyone receives one. So thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I will send you a card for you anyway.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was late and missed all of what you said.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Is there any participation by the trustees? Oh, excuse me. We have more public, sorry.
More public. Oh, we're run by public. So the kind has two concerns tonight, and one concern came from another, so I'll start with the first one. We're in to look at some of the past minutes and the past videos, and the union is now requesting that you either put information on possibly the trustees' page as to how to get to the videos, or a link to the YouTube to get to the videos, because nothing is on our side at all. So we are now taping in hopes to be even more transparent for the community members who cannot come. And now it's just very difficult for people to find those videos. One person told me they actually went on to the North Hampton Public Schools site and found the site and then got to the site, and so we shouldn't have to go in the back door. So we are concerned about that. But on that same line of thinking, as you read tonight, third thing down is your mission statement, and when you come to our front page of this school, the mission statement is nowhere to be found. You have to go into About, and then you have to go into the bar on the right and go to Mission Statement, and then you actually have to download it. It doesn't even pop up. You have to actually click on it again. So we're requesting that you consider, I'm not going to tell you what to do, I'm merely asking that you consider putting that mission statement on our front page. Because why are we here? We all teach this in our standards. I have this as a question on my competencies for my students. So why are we here? And it's nowhere to be found. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
I appreciate your input. Thank you. Is there any participation by the trustees? Rick, anything?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the June 7th, Ian 10th, 22 Board of Trustees meetings?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fabulous job as usual. Clear, concise, you know, really accurate summary. I mean, it's not easy to do, and it's wonderful to have that record.
Appreciate that. So we have information or proposals tonight, a property subcommittee report?
Rick DeQuadro, Chair of the Property Subcommittee. We've engaged with DEETS Architects to do a feasible study with the end result being a conceptual drawing of what we hope to move forward with on the replacement of the horticultural building. We have a lot of ideas and thoughts. We have, you know, roll the dice and get a whole new complex, but we're not sure if that's the reality. And then in between, this rebuilding what we lost and maybe a little bigger, and then the least, potentially the best reality is rebuilding what we lost, the same square footage. But we're looking at the options to see what we can do. So we've engaged DEETS Architects to start working on this. We're supposed to have a meeting this morning with them. The instructors have provided a wish list of items of what they'd like to see in this new building or this new complex if we can get to that stage. But there is, Tim Smith, our Facilities Director, had a family emergency and wasn't available, and he's a key part of this whole process. So that's been postponed to, what, next one?
The 26th of the year.
The 26th. There, in the Gazette Report on the initial meeting, there was some misinformation. The reporter indicated we've engaged them to design us a new complex or new building. That's not the case. We're not at that stage. We're just at a feasibility study and a conceptual study to see how we can move forward. And then, at that point, you'll most likely go out to RFPs from Architects to give us a proposal, and we go to the next step and hopefully get a, certainly we'll be able to rebuild essentially what we had, but we're trying to go above and beyond that. So we're working through that process and ironing out what we can and cannot do and what we can afford or not afford. So that's where we're at today.
Thank you. Any questions for her? Thank you.
Thank you. Relatively short before this evening. It may be a little difficult to see. I apologize for that. It seems like it's been forever since we've been here at the team. So as I was going through some highlights and updates, it seemed like it was a lifetime ago. But back in June, when we were still in session after the last board meeting that we had, on the 8th, we had our retirement celebration, and we had several retirees that we recognized up at Beadbrook Golf Course. We had several, not just because of this particular year, but unfortunately because of the pandemic, we weren't able to celebrate past retirees from the previous few years. So on the 8th, we were able to celebrate three years' worth of retirements, which was a great evening. And again, I cannot thank Ms. Carver enough. She was the, sort of the spearhead behind the scenes, making all the plans and the food and all the arrangements. So a wonderful evening, and thank you to Ms. Carver for all of that. The next day, on the 9th, we had the athletic banquet. Again, we haven't had that in the last couple of years because of the pandemic, so Mr. LaRoe, the athletic director, did a great job. One, I believe, big change that really made the evening, I think, more efficient was that we cut back on a more formal meal. There was no formal meal. It was more simply getting into doing the banquet. The coaches did a great job with their presentations to the student athletes, and it was a wonderful evening. 13th was a DESI CTE update call, just some various updates from the state that we've been talking about here as a board. The following day, the 14th, was the last day of school, if you can imagine that. It's been over a month now. And I want to thank all the staff that were able to participate and supervise the annual field day event, which again, we haven't had over the last couple of years because of the pandemic. But it's nice to see the students getting involved. To think of a field day at the high school level, it seems like an oxymoron, but it's a wonderful opportunity to see the kids out there doing different activities. It gives a chance for the staff to sort of say goodbye to the students, and it's a good way to wrap up the school year. So then, this was the first year that we celebrated Juneteenth, so it was a new holiday. We were closed on Monday, the 20th. And then the following day, I flew down to Atlanta, Georgia, to watch the Skills USA competition. I have a slide coming up with a couple of pictures. You'll see our students at work. I'll explain how well we did. I was honestly hesitant and concerned about how Atlanta could host a Skills USA competition. I've been two other times, one time with Ms. Mabet, down in Louisville many years ago. I was really impressed, the two times I went to Louisville, they do a good job hosting it. The fairgrounds down there, it's just gigantic fairgrounds, and they host the competitions. The hotel is approximately 20, 25 minutes away. I wasn't quite sure how Atlanta could handle it. I was blown away. Atlanta is a beautiful city. They have beautiful facilities for this particular competition. The hotel that we stayed in was adjacent to the competition. We were all right there. Right across the street was the Centennial Olympic Park, where the Olympic bombing occurred back in 96. So a lot of history there, a lot of story. The aquarium is there, the Coca-Cola factory was there, the Civil Rights Museum is there, the College Football Hall of Fame is right there. So a lot of things to keep the attention of the students and the adults. So a wonderful week. I'll talk about the competition in more. Then we came back, I came back from Atlanta. I participated in a meeting with Mr. Kehley and Mrs. Smith with Donald Scalia, working for the DPW. If you're aware or not, there's an issue out of Route 9 with our drainage system. It's sort of, Route 9 sort of caving in, and I'm not sure. So there's some discussions around the stormwater drainage from Smith, and what's happening when it gets out to Route 9. So there's some planes that are on the table, some back and forth. I'm not sure, Ms. Kehley, you want to talk more on that, or I'm kind of leaving the clip notes version right now.
Well, it's a situation that when the school was designed 100 years ago, that the runoff from the water, the driveway out there is pitched, and it goes down to the pasture end to Route 9. And what has happened over the years is the area between the school and a telephone pole that's right there, the water has caused a road around that telephone pole and also into the road. So the DPW about two months ago dug up the road and put a steel plate over it, but they inspected it and came in and did a study and brought it to Tim Smith about the way the runoff of our buildings needs to be controlled. So the architects, or, excuse me, engineers from the city said to Tim, "We will pay to have the drain water that comes off the buildings funneled into the pasture so that it does not run down that driveway into the road, and we'll take care of that." Well, Donna came over, and we had a discussion about it, and she disagreed that her department or the DPW or the city was going to pay for it. And I said, "Smith School's going to pay for it." I said, "Look, you know, how many years have you been in your job?" And I says, "This all happened long before you, long before me. It's not Smith School's problem." I said, "It's a runoff problem, and that's been there for a long time." I said, "I'm not prepared in our budget to take up this expense. And your engineers, your employees told Tim Smith that you're going to take care of it." Well, needless to say, it was left hand, right hand, and nothing could resolve that day, so it's still up in the air. But Donna's been back over and has been taking pictures, and the engineers are back at it, and they're doing some drawings. So we'll have a resolution on it. It just didn't happen that day.
Can I add a little bit to that? So my understanding is that the city is happy to build what's called an outfall to help filter the water so it's not going at such a rapid pace. There's also an issue with the pipe. The stormwater, the dimensions are a very large pipe going into a very small pipe. And so basically, it's blowing out Route 9.
Correct. And the design would be based on the weather patterns or the historical weather patterns. The engineers design, taking our water, getting it into Route 9 in a way that the Route 9 line can handle our stormwater, except for a few cases, about 10 days, I think is the estimate, about 10 days a year where the rain is so intense that there'd be an overflow, and that overflow would go out to the pasture. The concern from Tim is we're already experiencing some erosion in the pasture, and if we're just dumping more, not dumping more water, but if the water's reaching through and getting to the pasture, is that just going to continue the erosion? So that's the concern from Tim. So then, the solution to this was, how do we minimize the water getting into the stormwater drain system to begin with? Is there a way to capture that water on campus and get it into the ground before it goes into the stormwater drain to cause this issue? So the idea was, is there a way to capture the water coming off the buildings, get it into the ground before it goes into the drain? That would help. I think everybody agrees that would help. It's, who covers the cost for such a project? So that was my takeaway. So further discussion has to happen, obviously. So then, many of us, and it's also in the principal's report, unfortunate, not unfortunate to Mr. Kehley, but he's on vacation this week, but he's unfortunately not able to make it tonight. He also mentions in his report, the Connecting for Success Conference, which is the annual lava conference for the teachers and administrators, and it's held down at Asset Regional in Marlboro. We were finally back in person, again, after a couple of years being off. It's a great opportunity to reconnect with your colleagues across the state, a lot of valuable direct professional development for the vocational instructors. I believe in the report, mentioned there were nine teachers and administrators that went. And not only vocational instructors, we had an academic teacher also participating in getting some quality professional development out of the conference. And I'll talk a little bit more about what I got out of it in the future slide. We then had another day off, the holiday, Independence Day on the 4th. Came back, and we had the last property subcommittee meeting that Mr. DeQuadro mentioned. I have one slide to talk a little bit more in detail about what Mr. DeQuadro was sharing is spot on. Then this past week, I went to the MASs Conference down in Fowles, oh, actually, in Mashpee. Mashpee High School hosted the conference. That was my first time attending as a superintendent. Again, I'll talk about some of my key takeaways from that. Earlier today, we had a four-hour planning retreat with the Board of Trustees, and I can't think of trustee enough, but I think it was a great opportunity to come together, get to know one another, start talking about a vision and a direction moving forward. So that was great. So speaking of skills, we had three students. We had a student in criminal justice, a student in plumbing, and a student in automotive, all recent grads. So hard to see, I know, I apologize. Picture on the left is our automotive student, Brian McCullough, and he was competing in automotive, that picture there. The automotive competition, I believe, was 12 different stations, and they were each timed, about 22 minutes, 28 minutes. And when the buzzer goes off, they get up and they move to the next station. So this one, Tennessee, was participating in. The middle picture was our plumbing student, Nick. Doesn't matter. So what you see there is that every single plumbing student, they have this station and they're charged with building basically water lines to feed a toilet, a sink, and a whole drainage system. And they have about two, two and a half days to complete that particular project. And then on the right is Jordan Dunham in the crowd of blue. That's our criminal justice competition. Jordan was the graduating senior from criminal justice. And again, criminal justice was very similar to automotive. They have different stations, they're timed, so they have an interview, like a crime scene. They have a motor vehicle accident where they have to report to the scene and then deal with the drivers. They had fingerprinting, so on and so forth. So over the course of the week, Friday night was a closing ceremonies, and Jordan Dunham won first place nationally in criminal justice. So it's one of our newer, criminal justice is our newest program here on campus, and that was the best in the country. So it's quite amazing. And a young lady winning criminal justice, I think that is also noteworthy. Talking earlier today, I don't want to talk about the retreat, but we were talking about different models of career technical education, and it was really telling in criminal justice. So as we were talking to other instructors in criminal justice across the country, many states don't really have a criminal justice program like we have in Massachusetts. Even in Massachusetts, I think what we offer here is head and shoulders over what the other schools are in Massachusetts. But a lot of Jordan's competitors, they don't have a vocational school opportunity. A lot of her competitors were in traditional high schools, taking history classes. And within a history class, they had law enforcement or some criminal justice background, and that was their education in criminal justice. So obviously, what we're teaching Jordan and the students here is much further superior than what a lot of other states were offering. So anyways, she did a great job. Plumbing, as another example, I'm not going to make fun of any states, but if you see some of the stations, there were some stations that were pretty rickety as far as the plumbing, and you wonder if there's any indoor plumbing in some of those states. But what do you think about it? It's just a matter of the education value. And, you know, we are much more rigorous here in Massachusetts, and it shows when our students go to the national level. They take the first place, plumbing was second place in the nation. So a small school in Western Mass comes home with the first place and the second place nationally, and it was quite tough. Great experience. Just to piggyback off Mr. DeQuadro, the updates, again, we had that meeting a couple of weeks ago. Yes, we have contracted with DEETS. Our next property subcommittee is July 26 at 10:00 a.m. It'll be here in the library. We are still waiting on, if you drive down back, the building is still physically standing there. We are awaiting official approval from the insurance company and then the building department to take that down. Right now, there's been an investigation going on, the insurance company trying to look into the cause of the fire with the landlord. That's sort of delaying the process when it comes to the insurance claim. And as Mr. DeQuadro said, we're still preparing the path board, okay? What is that path going to be? And as far as school goes, we have, school's going to start in a month or so. We are preparing to have the two remaining classrooms in the Horticultural Building being ready to house the two classrooms, the related classrooms for day one. And that would be Mr. Nevin's current classroom in what we call the headhouse, which is sort of the space adjacent to the greenhouse. We believe we can get those two functional for day one. So that's where we're at right now, but more information after the next property subcommittee. Just one other, I'm just thinking about money and grants. Two weeks ago, there was a Skills Capital Grant, thank you to the board, allowed us to apply for. We did apply for that recent round of Skills Capital Grant for Horticulture and Animal Science. That particular grant, if we are awarded that grant, we can apply up to 30% of that grant to construction costs. So the goal is to apply that money to increase the equipment needed for us to expand into companion animals for animal science, along with purchasing a lot of new equipment in horticulture. And then we can apply 30% of the construction cost that we could use, a combination, use it for the renovation costs that we're going to see in animal science as we expand animal science, but also we can then, hate to call it, you know, the shell game, but if we can use that grant money to apply it to the renovation costs to animal science, with the tuition revolving money that I was going to advocate for the board to free up to help for that particular project of renovating animal science, we could use some of that tuition revolving money for the Horticultural Building rebuild. So we're going to use tuition, I was going to advocate to use tuition revolving money for some type of renovation, whether it was animal science or horticulture. If we receive the grant, that tuition money can be applied to this particular rebuild, and the grant money can be applied for animal science. So that's what we're working on behind the scenes. So as I mentioned, the two conferences I went to, Connecting for Success, the keynote speaker that week was Dr. Clearys Wornum, and she spoke to us on equity. She did a fabulous job. Her big takeaway was focusing on cultural competency. And the key concept there is, how do we connect to our students? Can we connect to our students if we don't understand who they are and where they come from? And do we place expectations on students because we want them to fit within our goal and our expectation of how we learned and how we grew up? And when that happens, a lot of times, we sort of butt hedge with the students. But if we sort of understand the student and where they're coming from and their background, and that background is very diverse, once we make those connections, then that's where the education kind of go to the next level. So she gave a very great presentation. I also had some updates from DESI. I attended another update on licensure updates, teacher licensures and different pathways. I went to sort of these two conferences, did a lot on personal social well-being, not only me as a superintendent, but as an avid team, as teachers. Everybody's been through so much during the pandemic. Everybody's sort of running on empty. And how do we focus on that social well-being, not for the students necessarily, but for the staff? So those are some of my big takeaways. And then at Connecting for Success, MAVA, we had our Board of Directors meeting. That was the official transition to the incoming officers for this year, and that's where I'm counting down the days of my presidency to be over. So I took over as president on July 1st. So again, the idea is great. I'm learning a lot and meeting a lot of people, but just a lot of news, I probably very much. So the MASs Conference, I went, again, to the Cape last week, my first time there. The big takeaway there was keynote, we had a couple of different keynotes, but this one, Dr. Kendy, I'm not sure if anybody has heard about Dr. Kendy. But back in 2020, he was named by Time Magazine as one of the top 100 most influential people in the world. He worked at BU, I believe, and it's all about his main focus and all of his researches around racism. And the big takeaway, I've been struggling, I'll be honest, I've been struggling around a lot of our equity initiatives and how do we move forward, okay? And I think a lot of us would identify that, we're not racist, okay? I'm not sure if anybody would really identify themselves as a racist. But are we anti-racist? And this was the challenge that he was posing to us. And what really, the light bulb went out for me was, he was talking back in the, not the colonial days, but back before the Civil War and during the Civil War. Massachusetts was full of abolitionists. We were very anti-slavery up here in the Northeast. But those same individuals, the abolitionists who wanted to end slavery, we would say that they're not racist. But then, once the North won the Civil War, those same abolitionists were opposed to voting rights for African-Americans. So Dr. Kendy was talking about how we may not be a racist, but are we practicing, are we instituting racist policies? Are we supporting racist practices? Not knowing. And the argument that the abolitionists were making were that the African-Americans that were recently freed as slaves, they weren't sophisticated enough. They were slaves for so long, they didn't have enough wherewithal to then vote. So there was a strong point, that all of us make decisions, either visor, I mean consciously or unconsciously, that we have to sort of review. So I am definitely recharged, I'm ready to go. I know we have a lot of work to do here. I think we have a wonderful school. But that was a major takeaway I took last week. Again, more updates, DESI updates, I think that's just constant. I participated in a joint meeting with MAVA and MARS. MARS, not the planet, MARS is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. A lot of similarities between their association and MAVA, so we had a joint meeting. Once again, I attended a session on how to personally assess ourselves. That was run by a fellow superintendent, a voc superintendent. It was a great, great session, and I was just kind of looking inwards. And then finally, the REPI Project. I'm not sure if you've heard about the REPI Project, R-E-P-I. That's Based Equity Diversity and Inclusion, and that's a major initiative coming out of MASs, and that we'll all be working on over the next couple of years. A lot of great work, a lot of highlights, definitely recharge my battery, and I'm ready to go for this coming school year. Donations, I'll click on the link in a moment to share with the board, the current update, thank you to Ms. Carver, where we stand with donations for the Horticultural Rebuild. We have two other donations that came in. So Tractor Supply changed their vendor up in Greenfield, the Greenfield location. They changed their vendor, they have all of this equipment and merchandise and inventory that they have to get rid of. So they reached out to Kyle Bostrom in Agmech, and they've donated all of that to us from Agmech, which is great. And in Smith College, they had some balance scales and calipers that they needed to get rid of, so they reached out and donated those to the engineering department here at campus. So then the spreadsheet. I know you can't see this, but just to get the visual cue, the sense, by date, this is back on May 26. Every row is a donated item. They have come in from all over the state. Each line, there might be multiple, so as, as an example, this one line here, I'm seeing chains of, chains of various lengths. These are chainsaw chains. These are chainsaw chains. There's 107 of them that were donated. So we keep on. And as of today, the monetary donations, monetary donations being checks, cash, gift cards, have totaled $25,061.37. So again, $25,000 won't build a new building, but $25,000 will definitely help us with equipment and put a dent into it. And again, I keep saying this, back to the insurance, we have insurance for the building, we also have insurance for the equipment. The more donations we get and the more we can use grant money for the equipment, as we put the claim in for the lost equipment, when that insurance check comes out for new equipment, we can apply that for the building. So again, back to the shell game idea. So hopefully, we can maximize the money that we have through insurance, through the various grants, to get the building as Mr. Quidrow was referring to. So in the press, this was in the, so back to Field Day. This was a young man, we had various community service projects going on around the city, and this was a picture of one of the community service projects that were happening during the field day. So Field Day is not all fun and games. A lot of the students wanted to give back to the community, and I want to thank the staff that oversaw some of the community service initiatives. So it was great to see that in the paper. So looking ahead, this looking ahead looks like there's a lot. My big assumption, my big ask is that we don't have an August board meeting. So my looking ahead is assuming that we do not have an August board meeting. So this will get into the beginning of the school year. So this coming Friday, as the MAVA president, I was contacted by the State House last week asking as a MAVA president if I would want to attend the skills capital grant announcement happening this Friday down at Minute Man. This is where Governor Baker will announce the latest round of skills capital grant. I also happen to say that we have an application that was on file, that was the application that we had for culinary. So we'll see on Friday if we receive the grant for culinary. And also, we applied for the CTI program. That's Governor Baker's initiative, more of the after-school, after dark programs, our adult ed programs. We also applied for a grant for culinary. That will also be announced at the Friday announcement. So keep your fingers crossed that when we're coming home Friday, we'll have some more grant money.
For culinary or for horticulture?
That would be culinary.
Or culinary?
Yes. Yeah. So that grant we applied for a few weeks ago. The one that we just submitted two weeks ago is for horticulture and animal science. We won't hear about that one until later in the summer. We already mentioned the property subcommittee on 26. We move into August, and down at Nevins, I'll be attending the MAVA annual retreat. That's just a chance for MAVA to come together and plan the upcoming year. On August 9, we'll have our admin team summer retreat. I will be here on campus, very similar to what the board did today, just kind of mapping out a vision for the upcoming year, planning out the school year. So that will be happening on August 9. On the 18th, we were invited to, back to Nevins, all of the animal science programs. So as I share with the board, the state has been looking at breaking out veterinary science from the animal science competencies. There's a frameworks team that's been working on that over the last couple of years. We've been involved with that particular team. They have some major announcements that they want to share with all of the schools, so that's going to happen on the 18th down at Nevins. I'll make sure I'm going there to hear what the updates are. Then we get into really the beginning of school. I want to thank the union and the staff. Our school year, the school calendar that we've adopted is sort of a high rip this year. I think it's a win-win for everybody. So it's not the normal sort of days of the week that we've had over the last couple of years, so we'll see how this goes this year. But I think it's Wednesday, if my days of the week is correct, Wednesday, the, I don't know, the 24th, August 24th, whatever day of the week that is, is our new staff orientation. That's when our new teachers, every parent will come in for a day orientation. The 25th is our, all staff will report for day one. Was I right?
Yes, Wednesday, and then we report on Thursday.
Thank you. So Wednesday is new staff. Thursday, all staff come in for the first official workday, our convocation. They get into the classrooms and the shops and get ready for day one. On Friday, the 26th, we'll have our new student orientation. So we say new students, it's typically freshmen, but we also have some new sophomores, upper class, and they'll come in also for that day for day orientation. And that's Friday. We come back that following Monday, the 29th, and that's our first official day of school this coming school year. It's Monday, August 29. That Friday is September 2nd. Per the contract, there's no school on that Friday, but that goes until Labor Day weekend. Monday, the 5th, is Labor Day, so there's no school automatically. So typically, there's a four-day weekend. This year, we're lucky, there's actually a five-day weekend for the staff, because Tuesday, the 6th, is a primary election. It has a primary testing location, we closed school just for logistical purposes. So students and staff will have a five-day weekend now. And then we return as a board to meet on September 20. Again, this is assuming no August meeting. So if we meet in September, we will meet in September. Assuming there's no meeting in August, the September focus will be, again, opening a school. How are we doing at that point, two, three weeks into school? I'll turn it back. Oh, sorry, questions?
Why was this year the first year, that is the first time you went to MASs?
Honestly, my major reflection was, I'll call it imposter syndrome. So imposter syndrome, if you look it up, it's basically feeling like you don't belong, you're not good enough. And MASs is all superintendents, traditional superintendents, vocational superintendents, and I just, I wasn't quite sure if I could connect with the traditional superintendents. I wasn't quite sure. After going last week, it was amazing, honestly. Great discussion, great networking, great connections, great discussion.
Did it require any?
Yes. Oh, definitely. Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you. So there's a principals report in the packet, and Joe's not here. I'd like to recite for business report.
Sure. So my office is currently in the process of finishing the behind-the-scenes work in closing out fiscal year '22 and opening fiscal year '23. That entails waiting for all of the final invoices to come in and then looking at the budget, and then all of the cost centers have to go down to zero. So it's just a bunch of journal entries. So that's one, this is probably one of our busiest times. Unfortunately, the, we went to bid for the multifunction school bus, and we have to reject the bid because both, the two bids that we received, both did not fit the scope of services. So we do have to reject and go back out to bid. So when Tim comes back, I'll be with him, we'll look at the criteria and think about if we adjust them. I know one of the biggest issues is meeting the deadline of receiving the vehicle, and one of the vendors did say that ordering a vehicle, the timeframe is eight to 12 months before you go. So we had put March, and that was based on the vendor that we had used previously. They had said that's when they thought the new models would be in. So unfortunately, we do have to go back out. I'm happy to report, all of the tuition was received in time for FY '22, with the exception of one district. I did speak with Dr. Lincoln Hooker on this, this particular district, they're contesting one student, and that doesn't include special ed portion. I did reach out to our legal counsel, who is now directing me to DESI. So unfortunately, my contact's on vacation, so I was, I did send him an email to hopefully talk to him this week, to see how we need to go about it. The grant coordinator, that we received two applicants, so I'm thinking that we might have to repost. Unemployment, we did finally get the third, the final invoice for June. We do have two charges. One is from March that I did reach out for our contact to contest, and then this one in June for contesting. So we do have a little bit of a balance for unemployment, but I do feel that we will get those refunded in the next fiscal year. Unfortunately, that is my, my report. Any other questions?
Congratulations on collecting all of the tuition money. Well done. There's a lot of parts to that, I know, a lot of iterations. How many students for that district that is, or this sending town that is contesting the student, how many students do they send overall?
So this student does, this district does send a lot of students.
And so have they, have they, they haven't paid for any of the students?
So they have.
They've paid for all the students, but not the ones during their contesting.
The balance is a little off. Unfortunately, I'm not sure how the secretary did her math, because we give spreadsheets within detail. So she just randomly just deducted stuff. So I was dealing with the business administrator, who then said, now, if you have any questions, you should talk to the county auditor. So it's like they're drop, they're just pushing the ball to him. So that's why I feel DESI needs to be involved. Because we do have, we did have a signed tuition letter. We do have a letter from the superintendent stating that they would pay through this date. So.
It was a, please tell me if you're wrong, it was a move, a failing move situation?
Correct, correct. And that we were unaware of. The district stepped in, wrote the letter to the parents, saying that as of this date, we will cover you with Smith. If you, if your child had a 10, I'm saying you have to cover the remaining portion. So we did receive that letter, but it wasn't until close to the end of June that they told me that they were not paying.
Okay. And I'm glad to hear they're not withholding the other tuition payments.
But it's, it's about $23,000.
Thank you, Kristen. Under new business, may I have a motion, a second, to approve the payment on the late invoice, June 30, going to $2,400 from the cell tower account to the Zipnu Lanowitz Architect for Services of Forestry Repair and Storage Building in Leeds.
So who?
Question.
Sure.
What was this for? It's services and?
Yeah, Tim is not here, but I did ask that question. I mean, it was work that was done during a period of time that Tim approved, and they had money in the account for it at that time. But the invoice came in late, so that's why I'm asking for it.
Okay, so why was there architect involvement? He was part of design services?
Because they had to read, according to my crystal.
Sure. So I just spoke with Tim really quick. Tim thought he was going to be here, that's why I didn't get more detailed information, but unfortunately, due to his emergency. What he said was, this work was supposed to be done earlier in the year. They were waiting for a carpentry to finish the hole downs and bolts and stabilization, and then Zip had to go back in and re-inspect to make sure that it was up to what it needed to be. So yes, the invoice was received late, so it should have been received sooner, but again, he was waiting for the final walkthrough.
Thank you.
Rick, you have a second?
So second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion, a second, to approve for discussion of possible action, a vote to approve applying for potential skills capital grant? Andy, just wait a second.
I can do the discussion.
Rick, you want, you want to move it? And I'll second?
So moved.
Second.
Not for discussion. So this is a new grant that will be coming out, I've mentioned this in the past, and it will be coming out later this summer. It falls under the traditional skills capital grant. We know that's a reimbursable grant. We know that I have to ask for approval to apply for the grant, which is why we're here this evening. It hasn't come out yet, it's going to come out later this summer because of the meeting schedule, that's why I'm going to be this evening asking for this. We are intending to apply again for horticulture and potentially animal science. This is a larger grant than the one that we just submitted two weeks ago. The monetary amount is much larger, and rather than only 30% being applied to construction, this new grant, we can apply up to 70% of the grant to construction costs. So this would be a potential big win for us in the rebuild of horticulture, the building. So that's why we want to get your approval, so then we can, once it comes out later this summer, we can write for that grant, submit for the grant, hopefully we see that grant to really help us out with the horticulture rebuild.
Can I ask a question about the process? I'm curious. We don't approve every, every time someone applies for a grant, we don't approve all of those, but why?
The state.
The state requires that, that's part of the language of the skills capital grant, is that they have to have the approval of your?
Because it's a reimbursable grant, we have to have the available funds upfront. So the local school committee has to say, yes, we authorize it.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Question. Explain the reimbursable part.
So hypothetically, if we receive a grant of $5 million, the state won't give us the $5 million to go out and purchase our equipment, so we have to have a means of spending that $5 million. As we spend the $5 million, we submit for reimbursement. So we have to spend all $5 million upfront and then get reimbursed. If we spread the $5 million over six months, you know, we have a bill, we submit the invoice, we get reimbursed. But we have to have that available by headcount.
And if we don't submit for reimbursement by their deadline, we would have to find the funds where the state would have to.
So they want to make sure you're for real.
So may I ask, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion, a second, to approve the following? Let me read it all. Following the circles for scrap, from criminal justice, 10 books, criminal law, 10 books, 10 motivated law books, 13 street law books, textbooks, and 12 Constitution of Massachusetts manuals, from science, one broken water distillation unit, and from social studies, American journey, world culture, and geographic psychological textbooks. May I have a motion, a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. I don't have Ms. Carver down. I want to make sure I ask enough questions, just kidding. Where do the books go? Like, do they go to, I know that sometimes they're, I know that they're heavy and it's hard to ship them, but I also know that there are schools that are looking for resources, so I was just curious.
That's a good question, honestly.
So I know that some of them have copyrights, so Tim has to follow those, because we were talking about some that he had in storage. But these say scrap, so they might be going in the trash.
Okay.
Because otherwise, surplus, he would put them out.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you and say publicly for the retreat that you put together. It was a fabulous opportunity. Deb did a great job of lunch, and the whole day was just a special opportunity to look at the future of our school as far as the daily activity. Andy, thank you for the reports that you gave us. You enlightened Rick and myself about a lot of things, and I know we've got a lot of work ahead of us with, with not only the things that are on our planet, or as far as the fire and the grants, but your staff, just to be complimented, please, Deb marked that note, made it so that they know that we appreciate the hard work that they're doing behind the scenes, that they do get the credit that they deserve. Thank you. So, next thing, future business. October 16, 10-headed regular Board of Trustees meeting. We're not going to have that, so we can take that off. September 20, regular Board of Trustees meeting, 5:00 p.m. here in the library. October 18, regular Board of Trustees meeting, 5:00 o'clock here in the library. May I have a motion, a second, to adjourn?
Rick?
So moved. So second. So long.
All in favor?
Aye.